Twenty-five at seven P. M. And the call meeting order will start, roll call to my left with Mr. Wimmer.
City Council member Paul Wimmer.
Mike Warrington, City Council member.
Jody O'Katy, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Homer, City Council member.
Phil Hamilton, City Council member.
Tim Berry, City Council member.
Tom Gresham for the Police Department.
Rick Lance, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Julie Boyd, Interim Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Matt Kane, Director of Finance.
J. T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Dana Anstrom, City Clerk.
Les Mangus, Director of Community Development.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, this time Jesse Jamerson will lead us in invocation. Thank you for coming, sir.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful hot summer day. Lord, I thank you for all the individuals represented in this room, both men and women, who are working tirelessly to do what they can for this community, to answer problems and issues, and to continue to move Andover forward. Lord, I pray that you would govern this meeting. I pray that as continued subjects are talked about, that you would keep emotions in order, that you would help us to have patience. Lord, I pray for encouragement for those that are serving, that spend time away from their families, to focus on these things. Lord, I just pray for, just to recharge, that you would continue to refresh them as much work that is done goes behind the scenes unless there's an issue. So, Lord, we just want to let them know that we thank them for doing these positions. And, Lord, again, we just ask that your hand would be on this meeting, bring to remembrance anything that may have been forgotten, and help it to be decent and in order. And in all things, we give you the praise. Amen.
Amen. This time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag flags of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This time, I'll open the floor for public forum. If you have anything you'd like to say, please state your name and keep it short. Any takers?
Peter Fox, ten fifteen Terradyne Circle. I happen to be looking at the minutes of the meeting yesterday, and there was some discussion regarding governing body compensation. I'd like to know if a decision has been made, what decision it was, and the reasons for
Peter, at this time, no decision has been made, but if you sit tight, I suspect there'll be a robust conversation here about that topic.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Public forum's closed. Acceptance of the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to modify the agenda as presented and add item seven-point five, and I want to have a discussion about something that's been on my mind about destruction of public Andover property.
Second.
Of what? I didn't catch that.
Destruction of public property.
Okay. I want to clarify, seven-point five would be part of the consent agenda, and I do not believe if there's something you're wishing to speak about, you're wishing to put something on a consent agenda, so if you would like to make it a new item number eight.
New item number. New item number eight.
Does the second recognize that it would be a new item number eight?
Yes, second. Item number eight.
On a consent agenda.
No, it will be a separate item, Mr. Mayor, if it's approved.
New eight.
I would also like to make a motion for acceptance of the agenda as modified with an addition of another item to come after Phil's or Councilman Hamilton on the discussion of City Council compensation.
Second.
Hey. Everybody hold on for the lawyer a minute. So, we have a motion on the floor to add a new agenda, number eight. It was for the purpose of, help me out, Councilmember Hamilton.
Destruction of public property.
We need to know if the mayor has any discussion on that addition before we accept the next motion.
So, I'm kind of confused because we already have a number eight.
Yeah, every, why don't we call it eight A, and then it will be.
Eight A, yeah.
Okay.
If you have no more discussion, Mr. Mayor, you can take a vote on that motion, and then we'll move to Councilmember Wimmer's motion.
So, so do we. Before we vote, can we have a little more information on what we're voting on?
General discussion about vandalism, destruction of Andover public property, there's several things as part of that that I'm going to include.
All right, we have first, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to admit I've forgotten, but now would be time to, if Councilmember Wimmer has an addition, he can consider that at this time.
I'd like to make a motion for acceptance of agendas modified with the addition of the item on City Council compensation as eight B.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero.
If nobody has any other additions or changes to the agenda, then that will be.
So, what did we just vote on?
You just voted on adding those two items and keeping the agenda otherwise the way it is, so.
So, we're not voting on any of that tonight?
We're doing the consent.
I understand that, man. Don't interrupt me. He's the lawyer.
Okay. Yeah, so what we'll have is a new item.
Added something.
We've added eight A and eight B in addition to eight, so you'll just call those agenda items. We'll have whatever discussion needs to be had, and if action can be had if they want it, and if not, we can move on.
Okay. All right, so I go to, back to consent.
Yeah, I just ask if there's any other additions or corrections to the agenda, and if not, I would entertain a motion to approve it with those two additions.
What are we approving?
The agenda for the meeting.
We're talking about compensation, or we're just giving it a blank, blank, I'm not.
No, it's just going to be an item on the agenda, you're going to call it, and it's an open meeting, we'll let happen what happens.
All right, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda items seven-point-one through seven-point-four as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. Now, eight A, is that where we're at?
That'll be fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, eight A.
So, I'm going to go ahead and kick this off. Something that's been on my mind a lot lately is I've been seeing quite a bit of reports that we've had to close down bathrooms due to vandalism, among other things, several times. Last night, our brand-new dam lodge got a hole punched into the wall, I'm not going to fucking get into the details of that. I'm pissed off. Like, this community knows better than to do this kind of stuff. We, as a community, need to be better at taking care of the resources that our tax dollars go towards. Like, I don't care who's doing it, it needs to stop. Like, the damage to our public facilities needs to stop. I'm tired of wasting our tax dollars and losing the ability to use these facilities because someone chose to vandalize or damage it. Like, I'm just pissed off about it. So, felt like that needed to be put out there.
Do we have, and I know it's catching anybody on the spot, so I don't assume that we'd have hard data, but have we had a situation with vandalism where we've been able to catch or hold accountable anybody that has vandalized any of this? I mean, anybody, I'm just asking, I don't know, I'm not aware.
We have a couple cases where suspects have been developed. I really can't speak about those cases because they're still in the investigation phase. Unfortunately, on a lot of these, without cameras or other witnesses, we don't have a whole lot of leads to go on some of these. But there are a couple of cases that our investigators or our officers are currently working where we have developed some sort of a lead, either because there was a witness or because there was a camera or something else in the area that's been able to lead us to that.
I would add, historically, a few years back, we have had a case where restitution, it went all the way through juvenile court, I believe, and restitution was made, so there has been some recovery from that, too.
Would that fall under the Police Department reports, Captain Gresham, in regards to, would, like, vandalism fall under criminal damage?
That is correct, that is the statute that covers it.
So, Paul, before your time, the Heritage, before it was when it was being built, somebody did thousands and thousands of dollars to equipment, generator, and stuff like that, and they did catch him, but it was through his, the individual's inability not to brag about it. So, a lot of times, that's the way we get it, is through citizen support.
I'm just wondering if we need to, at some point, you know, in a workshop or whatever, at your discretion, have, you know, more of a conversation, if there is significant vandalism being done, we're not able to, you know, catch the people. With all the new infrastructure and the parks and the facilities, I mean, I echo Councilman Hamilton that it is frustrating, and I guess let's just make sure we do our full diligence current, right, on, are we, do we have the abilities in place to, you know, be able to try to catch those people? And I know it's not easy, I get that, there's a lot that goes along with that, especially with public bathrooms, you know, you can't monitor what's going on inside, obviously, so, but just something maybe for conversation.
And this isn't the first time that the Thirteenth Street Park's been vandalized, the restroom, it's the first time it's been vandalized since we rebuilt the park, but it hasn't been done before.
And maybe it's a, maybe it's just a social media campaign where we can talk with Megan and city staff to just get the word out to almost like the community, holding each other more accountable for that type of thing.
I would say Megan's done actually a pretty good job of that. She's posted when the bathrooms are closed, and she has been sure to post that they're closed due to van, damage from vandalism. She's also taken the same approach with the dump site, when things have been dumped that are not to be dumped, and there's been a pretty steady conversation among visitors to the city's Facebook page to somewhat, I don't know if school is the right word, but school one another that the concern would be that they would lose these benefits, the dump site, the nice park amenities if they aren't able to take care of it. We could always do more, but.
And she also did a good job of posting the new hours for some of the parks that are a little bit different than some that just close at dusk.
And it's fair to say that cameras are not preventative, they're, they're for more after the fact, trying to find out who tore stuff up, so it's a, it's a, it's a hard pill to swallow, but it's the reality of the world we live in.
Tom, do they have a routine when they patrol? Do they, like, every forty-five minutes, they swing by Thirteenth Street Park at 2:00 A. M. Or, I mean, we don't want to give the secret away, but I mean, is there a routine that they do?
I wouldn't say there's a routine, because when you get into a routine, you're predictable.
Right.
And bad guys will figure that routine out, and they will do their damage or whatever other crimes they're committing at the times they know our guys are not going to be there because they know they're villains at this time, or they're at Central Park at this time or something like that.
Okay, but they do patrol at 2:00 in the morning instead of sitting on South Endover Road and running radar?
Absolutely. I could probably show you several times in our interwatch where they've checked on cars in either park or people that they found in either park late at night.
Thank you.
I would add that there's times where we have reason or suspicion or exposure that is above normal, and Police Department's always been really good, we'll contact them about putting on the watch list, and they do a pretty good job of extra drive-bys and stuff during those times.
Any other questions, concerns? Do we need to vote on anything? No, okay. Eight B.
So, I'll go ahead and take this first because I'm the one that made the recommendation last night on the City Council pay. One of the reasons I felt comfortable doing that, as I've been on the council about a year and a half now, I will not be running for reelection, which means I have no beneficial interest in this decision if we were to make a decision to bump our pay. So, let's note that first. It puts some of the people up here in a little bit of a precarious position because if there was a bump, Tim would be a beneficiary, Homer's rerunning, he could potentially be a beneficiary of this change, Jody's got several more years, Mike's in my seat right now, and then Paul, similar situation. So, this has been on my radar for a while, and I've tried to look at data, compare data, and come up with a logical approach on how I felt. It's really, this boils down to a philosophical debate, and the debate boils down to, as elected officials, really should or should we not be compensated? And there's kind of two theories of thought, it's, this is a volunteer position, we sit up here and spend our time out of the kindness of our heart to serve the community, we don't deserve any compensation, and then the other one, kind of theory of thought is, we spend our time, resources, to serve the taxpayers, should we be compensated for that? So, I'll frame that first. So, as I thought about it, I tried to come up with different methods, I looked at what other cities make to try to decide, you know, should we look at comparable cities to see what they pay theirs? That was a hard approach for me because I could have picked various cities, some smaller than us, some bigger than us, that are paid more, and I could have picked and chose the data, but to be honest, we want to be Andover. We don't want to be Oletha, we don't want to be Lenexa, we don't want to be some of these communities that pay there, we want to be Andover. And as part of that, I believe we want qualified people sitting up here to guide the direction of this city, not only now, but into the future. And so, as I thought about that, it's my responsibility as a City Council member to figure out a way with this next generation of individuals that are coming through, right or wrong, I personally think they are not going to just want to sit up here out of their kindness of their heart and they, because they want to serve their community. And so, my proposal was, we currently make just over $5,000 to double that pay, which, let's be honest, that's not going to make anyone rich, that's not going to cause anyone to quit their day job, but it is something that I think could incentivize the next generation, a younger group of individuals, to potentially want to sit up here and be the direction of our city going forward. We need younger voices up here, and it's not, to be honest, this has nothing to do with money. It has to be, it has to do with, I believe, what's fair, what's right, helping to direct the strategic direction of this town, and so that's why I made the recommendation of double. Why I came up with double, it just felt like, I didn't want to incentivize people and say twenty, thirty thousand, because then you could have people sitting up here because of money and want to do it, so I didn't, I wanted to disincentivize that happen, and I felt like double was the appropriate number. So, that, that's how I arrived at what I came up with.
So, you're basically basing your request on what you feel, and you're using no data to the surrounding cities, you're basing on, you said it five times, I feel, I felt, I felt. Well, we don't make decisions on how we feel, we make decisions for the city of Andover and the citizens of Andover based on facts and figures. So, it's just, it doesn't make sense.
So, going along with that, if you want me to pull up the numbers from yesterday, I can pull up data that shows pay higher than I'm recommending.
Correct me if they're wrong, there was some in your, in your packet yesterday.
Yes, that's what I'm referring to.
So, yeah, so Derby gets paid less than us, and they're a one-tier city, and we're a two-tier city. So, how do you justify a bigger city paying their folks less? And then we're going to say, here's the next thing, is they're going to say, well, we're looking future. Well, look at our governing body right now, young people all across it, we got, we got, we got young people running for City Council for the next time, all right? So, how did you say, how are you saying that we got young people that aren't going to run when we got young people running right now?
Sure.
So, how, you can't say that.
I can say that because.
It's not factual.
Is Derby, is Derby the fastest-growing city over 10,000 people?
How's that, what's that got to do with anything?
Because you want.
So, Les, tell me something, how much stuff have we gone through planning, zoning in the last three months? Are we, are we, are we, are we doing, is planning and zoning overwhelmed with all this stuff coming in?
I wouldn't say we're overwhelmed, we have a steady caseload every month.
Okay. But it's not like we're busting at the seams with, with growth, justifying, Oletha, you brought that up, there are a million people. So, so, you can't, how do you, how you, how you, using Lenexa, we're not compared to them, we're compared to El Dorado, we're compared to Derby, Augusta, their mayor gets $5,000 a year, you know, if they're mayor. So, so, so what do you, what's your?
I don't think I would compare Andover, maybe in terms of size, but in terms of potential growth, in terms of school system, in terms of a lot of things.
So, Maze is, Maze is outgrowing us under 10,000 population.
Okay.
So, which, which, which metric do we want to ignore? Which metric want to ignore?
Which metric, metric do we want to use? I mean, that's the trick.
Yep.
We, we use other cities to the benefit of the cause that we're trying to do.
Right.
I think that's the biggest problem I have is, one day, we're, we're going to, we want to be like Derby, the next day, we don't want to be like Derby, one day, we want to be like them. I, I, I just, we need to pick which way we want to go.
All right. So, so, let's revisit history. Because Homer has a selective memory. August twenty-nine of 2022, there are three people on this governing body right now, right now, that wanted a 400% raise. 400%.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm tired of you saying that.
So, tell me.
We did not want a 400% raise. We started high so we can negotiate down. You are such a crappy leader to this board that you just threw your personal fit, and I'm done with it.
Councilman Berry, Councilman Berry, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Berry.
Hold on, I've got the minutes from that date.
That's great.
I'm glad to get.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to help here, everybody.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to help. All right. You need to wait for the mayor to recognize you, and then you can say whatever you want.
Yes, I apologize.
So, so, so please, please wait to be recognized, and when the mayor recognizes you, the floor will be yours until you're done. Mr. Mayor, you'll have to recognize people as they want to speak, but we're not going to have everybody talk at once, I know.
I always do, and I often get interrupted on this body, and we had, it happened already tonight. So, I've got the minutes, Tim, it's not my imagination, it's numbers, it's numbers. I've got the minutes, I'm glad to share them with the public, anyone wants to email me, I'll be glad to share it with them. Anyone want to speak?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to speak.
Yes.
I feel like we continue to go back three years, most of us were not even on this governing body, and we are not dealing with the same things we were dealing with in 2022. This is three years later, and we are now dealing with things in front of us today. I don't feel like it's healthy, beneficial, or respectful to continue to go back and attack others from minutes from three years ago.
I'm not attacking.
I would not want to be attacked from something that I may have said or not said three years ago, if I remember or not.
I'm not.
So, I don't feel like it is beneficial, it's not healthy, and there's nothing good going to come out of rehashing something from three years ago.
I'm not attacking, I'm not attacking anyone. When someone says to me, it's not about money, it was about money. So, there's nothing changed in these three folks, that's why they're bringing it up, because of money. So, if it ain't about money, then what are we talking about? Just, I'm just saying.
Mr. Mayor.
And I, and I, and I don't get a vote, so it doesn't, you know, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't agree with it, and you can't tell me it's not about money when it was about, when it's about money. And when we sit up here in this governing body and say, oh, my God, I don't want to raise the sewer bill $5 because we'll lose people, and then, and then the next thing you know, we want to double our, 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 what we get paid and do it three meetings a week, do the math of that, what's that per hour? We're going to be making more than anybody else in the city as a, as a, as a, as a elected official.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing was voted on or passed last night. This was meant for a conversation that I believe Councilman Hamilton wanted to bring to workshop was to have the conversation. We did not decide on any numbers, so it's very, when there is a very vague post, it needs to have context, it needs to have data, and it needs to have the information. We cannot just throw something out there without backing up, we did not vote on anything last night. And all we have done is simply, Councilman Hamilton just wanted to bring forth a conversation, and when I was saying, asking you to please not attack anymore, Homer is the one that you continue to bring up, and I would like for you to please refrain from that, that is not fair.
So, so I must have been at a different meeting, because I specifically said, if we come up with something reasonable, and Mr. Berry looked at me and said, that is reasonable, that is our, that is our bottom. I was at that meeting, and that's exactly what he said. So, unless I was at a different meeting, he looked me right in the eye and said, that is the bottom. We pulled the minutes on that, too, man. So, whatever. Anyone else? Paul, would you like to speak?
I would just like to say that, you know, personally, I'd, I'd make the statement now that it personally, it's not about, for me, it's not about the money and what I'm getting, obviously, I wouldn't be sitting up here if it was. I wasn't aware of the exact amount of compensation when I decided to run for City Council, I think somebody had told me that there was some nominal amount that we got, I made assumptions on what that was, but it's fairly accurate as far as a nominal amount, when in comparison, you know, if you're asking yourself, what, what is the reason for the, you know, the financial piece of it? And again, I would say the biggest focus for me and what I heard from a lot of others last night was that, again, it's about continuing to get more involvement in local city government, to get more competition in running in the elections, and I know you keep referencing, you know, we have, I think, I believe, three open seats coming up, and we have four individuals running, but what if that could be 10 individuals running? What if when you run for mayor again, you have eight other people that are running against you? That's only for the betterment of Andover, no different than me. The best thing in the world would be if, you know, 10 citizens of Andover stepped up and said, you know what, I want to get involved, I can do better than Paul Wimmer's done, and I'm going to run, and here's why, hey, you know what, I'll gladly step aside and let somebody that's much smarter, much better come in. So, if, if having, you know, a compensation that allows for a little bit more of that, again, it's, I think it's relative, I don't know that, you know, 5,000 to 10,000, I don't think that we're going to get, you know, everybody busting down the door to run, but if it does help, you know, again, one of the council members made reference to, you know, a lot of times, we're taking our own PTO time off of our full-time jobs to do the job of City Council, to attend events, to participate in workshops and different things, and so that is nice to have a little bit of compensation for that. And I think that there's, to Council, Councilmember O'Katy's point, I think that it's extremely important to give context and information, because I see time and time again on social media where, you know, a lot of people, citizens of Andover, have the wrong impression or wrong information about what we're doing, why we're making a decision we are, and so to have an elected official representing that, representing the body, going out and putting that information out there to push it in one direction that they believe, everybody's entitled to their opinion, and even last night, as you shared, and I said, I think it's awesome, your passion for how you feel, there's no doubt in my mind that you put the people of Andover first, that that's what you care about the most. That's amazing, that's awesome. You know, a lot more people should be like that, and, and we all have the ability, if we wanted to, to say, you know what, we don't agree with a salary or, not a salary, but a compensation, we'll donate, I'll donate my entire compensation to, you know, I know you're very active with the retirement center, so there's, there's a lot that goes with that conversation more than what was shared.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
To kind of go off of what Councilman Wimmer said, I think it's very fair, and I think it was actually Homer that brought this up last night. Every. Every one of us live in this city, while not everybody works here, we do, kids go to school here, we have sent, we spend our money on gas, on food, eating out, spend our money on gad buttons and all of the things, concert tickets, whatever it is. The money that we get, we have been able to put back into this community. And Councilman Homer mentioned that last night and for someone that doesn't work here, he makes a point to spend his money here at different events. I have seen him at events that are, again, Andover Police and Fire Foundation, there are people there, Andover Chamber, all those events, there are city council members there. Those are not free, those tickets are not cheap. So to see these people not only putting their money back into the city, but trying to make it better and make it a point that that money isn't just because we want to get paid. We're not up here because of money, we're up here because we want to do what's best for the city. And that is what the conversation was brought to last night.
So what did I put on social that was inaccurate? Did we not, did we not, don't, don't the citizens of this city deserve to know that their governing body is called transparency? Don't they deserve to know that we are seriously thinking about giving ourselves 100% raise? There ain't a person in this room that ain't screamed about Congress giving theirself their own raise, right? Or not, there ain't a person in this room said there ought to be term limits, they're not gonna do it. And then who, we sit here and say, it, it, it's, 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 it's the right thing for me to do to let them know that, hey, because we do it in a consent agenda or something else and they may not know till after we've done it, don't they have a right to know what we're thinking about doing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please.
I, yeah, absolutely, full transparency. And that was somewhat of my frustration last night and even in the past is that as I've brought this up, you know, we were led to believe that there was gonna be a study done on city council compensation and then nothing ever came from that. And so I inquired about it and was told that you had said that we were not gonna do that, we were not gonna have that conversation, it was done, it was done. Just as in last night at the council workshop where I felt like it was probably more appropriate to have this conversation so we could ask a lot of questions and try and kind of get the information and figure out where we stood on it, we were shut down again and said, we're not having this conversation. And again, I respect your opinion.
That's not accurate, that's not accurate.
I'd like to speak.
The, the mayor of Andover, and, 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 no, can't do that, I'm sorry. We had a public forum, you wasn't here for it, I apologize, that's the way it works.
Of course.
Correct me if I'm wrong, JT, does the mayor not pick what's on the agenda?
Uh, the mayor sets the agenda, but the agenda is subject to change by the will of the majority of the councils.
As we did tonight.
Yeah.
Right, and by the way, Mayor Price is the one that had Jenny put the compensation on the workshop. So don't be acting like I was trying to stop anything, but if I don't think it's right, I have, I have every right to say no too, and if I don't want it on agenda, then you all can do what you did tonight. But I have an obligation to the citizens of Andover, 16,000 people, to do what I think is right and that's what I did. And, 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 but I just, you can't, I didn't say anything inaccurate. I think folks ought to know that we're, we're talking about, and they, and I, and I, and I deserve the opportunity to tell them, I'm against it. I, I don't get to vote. So, and I, just so you know, I take more heat than all of you for the, the decisions we make. So if you want to vote for it, I can't stop you, but I am gonna, just like I said last night, I will let the public know, just like the golf course, I know we don't want to revisit history, but that golf course is going away had I not informed a citizen of this city that it was gonna go away. And I'll always do that and I will not apologize for it. Anyone else, speak up.
So a little bit to last night, I won't necessarily disagree with anything that you said, but after we had a robust discussion about our thoughts around city council compensation, Jenny mentioned that it sounded like there was some kind of consensus around our thoughts on what we were thinking and after she made that known, the mayor made it known that he would not allow it to come forward for any type of vote, which.
No, I said, I wouldn't, I said I wouldn't put it on the agenda.
He wouldn't put it on the agenda, which means in order for it to become an agenda item, one of us had to make a motion to put it on, which is fine. The system worked, we did what we wanted to do, but what was frustrating last night is I respect and appreciate that you put it on to the agenda last night, I do. And I appreciate that you've taken a strong stance and you're not gonna move from that stance, I appreciate that too. What was frustrating to me though is how that conversation devolved into you attacking Homer, in my personal opinion, then Tim, that is what is, was not acceptable, acceptable to me. I get it, you're very passionate about your beliefs, you are fighting for the taxpayers, but when we devolve into personal attacks on your governing body, that's just not acceptable.
I, I disagree with your assessment.
I'm not quite finished. And then storming out of that meeting and throwing a door open that smashed one of our walls in the new lodge, I mean, we can get pictures, that, that is unacceptable.
So is it my fault that I didn't swing the door open?
Okay.
I left, so is it, is it my fault that every door in this city building got something to keep from hitting the wall? All right? And second thing is, you hear, you're being selective again. All I asked Homer was a fat, a straight-up question about, about him trying before. And so, so you don't seem to be worried about Councilman Berry saying that I use city money to better myself? You don't, you don't seem to mention that, my friend. Oh, you don't remember that?
Mr. Mayor?
Wow, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You definitely conveyed that you felt attacked by Mr. Berry. Our perception was you were attacking others.
That's fine.
So it is all about perception and I understand, but you felt attacked as well. So you have to understand from our standpoint.
I didn't say anybody was using city dollars, let's just stop, that doesn't matter. I didn't say anybody was using city dollars for their gain. Right? I did not say that. So anyway, let's move on, that's enough. Anybody else got anything they want to say? Can't. You had, we had a public forum, sir. And you weren't, weren't here and that's why, huh?
I've been here, I've been here.
You wasn't here during the public forum, huh? Okay, now I got this going.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I'm currently running for city council as well.
That doesn't mean you get to speak in the meeting, this gentleman here, if he wanted to get back in and speak, could not do it. And I know he'd like to, he's chomping at the bit, but he can't do it either. There's a set of rules for a forum.
I understand your ego, I got it.
What?
I understand your ego.
Okay.
Been on full display this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Warrington wants to be recognized and.
Thank you.
I would, but the audience is too busy interrupting the council meeting.
We are in the portion of the meeting where the conversation is, is supposed to be at the bench. So I think Councilman Warrington wants to be recognized.
Yes, sir. I, I did, by the way, but I kept getting chirping from the audience. And would you, and JT, if you'd like to explain why we have the public forum and why he can't speak now, you're welcome to do that, so he don't think it's my arrogance.
Well, one of the, you know, so one of the things the city does that it doesn't have to do is that it has a public forum where it accords everybody a period of time to speak at the beginning of the meeting. And that is not allowed to be a debate or really a question and answer period, it's really for the public's opportunity to be heard. We have a lot of people, we limit that to five minutes, but right now, we're in the business portion of the meeting and so unless, unless somebody wants to make a motion to change that, right now, we're, we're in a portion of the meeting that has discussion at the bench and, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna request from the participants in the audience that they, that they, you know, recognize and support our, our rule in that regard.
Now, go ahead, sir.
All right. Um, first I'm gonna say something on that and I'm a huge opponent of not allowing the public to speak during our items, that's not part of public forums. But we, we have let it happen in the past when we all agree. Is that always right? I don't always agree with it, but, um, but we, we have let it happen, so I guess we have suspended that rule temporarily for that one item. And you probably know that we've done that a couple of times, but it's rare, correct?
Well, I, I, I mean, I want to be perfectly clear so that everybody understands. If, if it were the will of the majority to reopen the public forum, we're in a regular meeting, you could, you could reopen the public forum, but the mayor is correct that that's not the portion of the meeting we're in currently.
Right, yeah, I, I agree with that.
And, and the, and the public forum, just to be clear to the listening audience and everybody else, the public forum is an option, it doesn't have to be, we don't have to do it, we do it out of courtesy for the citizens of our city. All right?
Anyway.
Go ahead, Mr.
So I appreciate, so thank you, but I'm sorry, but probably should have talked earlier, but I appreciate you wanting to. Phil, you did a great job of bringing, bringing all, you, because you're a numbers guy. He's accountant, so, um, you know, you, when you're looking at things, you're not always looking at purely numbers, you're looking at sizes, you're looking at growth, you're looking at several different things. And so you're taking all of that data and putting it into something that could be reasonable. And, um, which I think that's where you came up with, not came up with, but you used the word I feel, which you, you summed it and could have been 40%, could have been, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It could, so that was just a summarization of you saying I feel. So I understood it. The discussion last night was pretty horrible at times. And I, I don't like attacking people and I, and, and Mr. Mayor, I don't like you doing it. And you do it quite often when you are head-strung on something. And being head-strung on things is great, okay, but that's also your opinion too. So, but we had a consensus, uh, because we can't vote on no workshops, but we had a verbal consensus that that was something that we wanted to move forward with. And, um, we, we are definitely not a dictatorship council. And when your council is mostly for something, you need, at that point, leave it up to the vote and see what happens because you always say you don't, you can't vote. You can vote if it's a tie. But, um, you voiced your opinion, um, everybody else was mostly calm and.
Oh my God.
But you, you, you had a lot of attitude.
Wow.
And, and I, and I, I told you, your tone was just out of control and it wasn't appreciated, so. I, I.
So do you have anything about, do you have anything about, we need to move on, do you have anything about the race, more money? Do you have any opinion on that?
I think we all last night said that we agreed or we would support, um, what Phil's recommendation was.
So, so I talked to Jenny today and I said, we're not gonna put it on the agenda, we're gonna let the system work how the system works, is that not correct? I said, well, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put it on the, I'm not gonna put it on the agenda. And we discussed that what happens tonight, exactly what happens, that is what, that's the way this form of government is set up, that the mayor can't keep from putting something on the agenda and then the governing body can do just what we did tonight, that's what the system's made to do, that's the way I chose to do it. If you want to make it where the mayor don't get to choose the agenda, then that's a different discussion for a different day. But the way it is set forward now, I picked the agenda items. And then you all can do just what you did tonight, the system worked the way the system's supposed to work, all right? So I don't, uh, so that, that's just the way it is. So do we want to beat this horse all night long if you have something else you'd like to say or do we need to move on? Because we all see it differently and tomorrow, later tonight, when we're done here with this section, we all have to go back to governing together. We can have difference of opinions, we can have difference of, of philosophy, you can come up with a thousand different ways to prove your point. Republicans and Democrats do it every single day on TV. You get on one channel, they say, hey, this, this, look at this statistic, you look at this statistic. I choose, and I, I'd like to say, I won't say it, but I choose to look at data that shows that we are paid more than others and then you all get to vote, right? So if, if we're, if we're done, we'll move on and, and at whatever point we'll vote on it, so. Where do we go from here, JT?
If anybody, if, and if anybody else wants to be recognized for discussion, we can continue discussion. If there is no more discussion, you, you are permitted to move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My understanding with how this works would be that I'm gonna officially make a motion to take the recommendation and double the governing body's compensation as per the discussion last night.
For the record, we have a, we have a motion, um, for the record, because I don't know what it is, can someone tell me what the compensation is so that what, for the record, what, what doubling it means?
For mayor, it is $8,280 per year for council members, it is $5,405.
That would be double what they make now? That's what they make now.
That's the motion.
So just purely for Councilmember Wimmer, help me, I know you don't like to do public math, but he is, he is, he is making a motion that those be increased to.
16,560 and 10,810 and I just earned my gold star for doing the math.
So that, that's the motion you are making.
And that, and I need some help with the wording on this, but that, because it was brought up last night, that it's not, um, I don't know if it's salary or however you describe it, where it's not by the meetings attended. I don't know what the proper.
Think you could move.
Yeah, um, make it an annual salary, not a per meeting stipend.
So, so the motion?
I, I, I want a logistical clarification on that because this comes to our finance team because we do not, I, we pay nobody else upfront for a year, so I don't know if that's what that proposal is.
No, it's not.
Or if you would like it divided at payroll, so at the same, if you would like that annual amount split over 26 pay periods, like we pay our employees, then finance will just do that math and, and include that.
Yeah, that's fine, whatever, I mean, I would say whatever's more convenient or easiest for you guys. Right now, it's quarterly, correct?
Yes, sir.
So.
So would 26 payments cause more work for city staff?
It's de minimis, I would say.
So what's the motion?
So, so we're, you know, we're, we're, we're far off the, we're far off the map, so I just want to make sure you understand where we are. We have a motion on the floor.
I just have a quick question. Can you repeat the part about, and I understand, like, we all do come to all the meetings, we come to everything, but I, I want to make sure that verbiage is clear that for the future and going forward, we don't have someone that is getting paid but is never around. I don't pay my staff if they don't show up and I don't get paid if I don't show up to work. So I feel like if we are going to do this, there needs to be an understanding and I just want to be careful with that verbiage and how we explain that because I don't want that language to be misconstrued as you don't have to show up, if you're elected, you get paid and you don't have to come to anything. I, I want to be very clear on that verbiage, JT.
I, I do believe we have parts in our charter, I think it's our charter, that state that, that you cannot miss more than two meetings.
Okay.
Without the, without.
I couldn't.
Am I right, JT, I can't, there's something in there that.
And under, under state law, if you. And under, under state law, if you, if you, and I'm sorry, I'm not going to know it off the top of my head, but if you, if you miss a number of meetings unexcused...
Yes.
There, the majority could entertain your removal.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there was something there.
But it's for unexcused, meaning that you just simply don't show up and don't offer any excuse.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was in there, and we weren't going to just...
You're right.
Pay for no reason.
Yeah. There is a mechanism whereby people who don't attend meetings actually can be compelled to attend.
Okay.
If they didn't excuse themselves.
Thank you.
I do want to clarify, that does mean sending out the police chief to go pick up the members. That's literally, that is literally the defined recourse.
And he's not even here to defend himself.
The likelihood that you're going to do that, in my humble opinion, is small, so I do not want to mislead anyone on thinking they had a recourse that maybe they don't find desirable.
Thank you.
So I don't under, so, so, as a, kind of as a spectator tonight, and trying to help you through the process, you have a motion on the floor to increase the annual stipend for the mayor to sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and council members to ten thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, with the understanding that that stipend would be paid simultaneously with payroll over the car, course of the year, and no longer be tied specifically to attendance. That is the motion on the floor.
All right. So we're clear on the pay, the meetings, and so I need a second, right?
Second. Second.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye.
No. Did we have another one?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go. Votes, I don't even know anymore what we're doing, kangaroo court seems like.
I believe, I believe the vote was five to one.
Okay.
I do have, I don't want to make this last longer than it needs to. Is, is, is there, what? Yeah, I'm worried about the effective date, is what I was going to talk about.
Oh. I believe I heard for the record, the vote was five to two, because the mayor does in fact have the ability to vote on non-ordinance items, of which this is. So if we are to have the record record correctly, it should be five to, two nays, or Mr. Henry, Mayor price.
Record can certainly reflect if the mayor is opposed.
Yes.
Okay.
Opposed.
So the motion passes five to two, purely for the administrative side of this. That's going to start effective immediately unless there's another motion that, that affects, that affects that, so that would start with the next payroll, the way you have it worded now. Are there any other motions that need to be made?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that the effective pay raise for the governing body takes effect January first, 2026.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Aye. Or nay.
Motion carries five, one. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Now we can move on with the meeting, correct?
There's no other motions on this agenda item. You can move on to item eight, Mr. Mayor.
Dana.
Mayor, did you vote nay on that last motion as well?
No, if it's going to start January, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, just for, just for her convenience there, did you abstain, or are you voting yes if it can start on January one?
Abstain, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, JT.
We're now ready for agenda item number eight.
It's ain't a problem, it's a learning experience for myself. All right. Annexation resolution, train enterprise addition, and Julie will speak to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as the mayor introduced, we have an annexation petition... Get closer to it. We have an annexation petition from the owner of nine nine four seven Southwest Metalark Road, located at the corner of fifty-four and Metalark Road. As you can see, you all may be experiencing a little deja vu. We actually saw this case back in 2024, the owner petitioned for annexation back then, and we moved the annexation all the way through the process, got it approved, and thought that we were done. Come to find out, this, since it is not adjacent to current city corporate limits, will have to be considered an island annexation, which state law requires us to treat slightly differently. So we're basically redoing the annexation process in order to clean up paperwork. For the property owner, nothing is changing at all. He had to sign a new piece of paper, and that is it. For us, this item before you is a resolution that you all would adopt that requests that the Butler County Board of County Commissioners make findings and adopt their own resolution, which would then allow us to proceed with an annexation ordinance in the future. So your item right now is to approve what you had previously already okayed in the form of resolution that requests that the Board of County Commissioners allows us to proceed as we did before.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And we don't have to repeal or take away the previous one?
That might be a legal question, you just walked away, but that ordinance...
Less than Jenny, you're saying no.
Okay, then no.
In essence, it was not valid, because it should have come before the Butler County Commissioners.
First, okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution requesting that the Butler County Board of County Commissioners make and provide findings as required by KSA one-two-dash-five-two-zero-six-A-three regarding the proposed annexation of certain lands generally located at nine nine four seven Southwest Metalark Road, Anover, Butler County, Kansas.
Second.
Judy. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine-one, Southern Hills First Edition amended petitions, resolution of advisability, et cetera, and Jenny's going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and council, in your packet tonight is a request. We did have another set of bids that went over the petitioned amount. You'll recall, we talked about this at not last night's workshop, but the month prior's workshop. Southern Hills did initially provide us petitions for the project in January, four months prior to your recent policy adoption, that will say when petitions need to be reissued, they will be subject to an additional fee. So this proposal to you tonight is just to repetition the revised resolution of advisability, and then the next item that you're all very well experienced in handling at this point, the actual work ordinance that allows us to do the work. Those are all being requested without that fee, because they were well in place before that policy came before you. Ken Lee with Garver is here tonight as the agent. Should you have any questions about the subdivision or the projects in question? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the revised petitions for sanitary sewer and sanitary sewers main system improvements, approve the amended developers agreement, and adopt an amending resolution of advisability related to the Southern Hills First Edition.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine-two, Southern Hills First Edition amended work ordinance, and Jenny again will speak to us on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, did I mess up?
No. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I move to adopt an amending ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the Southern Hills First Edition.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine-three, bid award Southern Hills Sewer, and Rick's going to talk to us about that.
Mr. Mayor and council, now that you've passed the two or three previous items related to the Southern Hills addition, we can now do a bid award to the lowest bidder, now that the petition limits are within the limits of the, or the bid is now within the limits of the petitions. If you have any questions, I, or as your city minister mentioned, the developers, engineers in the audience, too.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the lowest qualified bid from Apex Excavating Park City, Kansas, in the not-to-exceed amount of eight hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars, and reject all other bids, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for sanitary sewer improvements to serve Southern Hills addition.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. I drew a blank. Ten-one, Vista Ridge First Edition MKEC Engineering Agreement. Les Magus will speak to us on this matter.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you tonight is an engineering agreement for the preliminary engineering and limited construction administration services for the Vista Ridge First Improvements. This agreement is a bit different than the typical subdivision engineering agreement in that MKEC will be doing the design, they'll help us out through the bidding negotiation of these public improvements, but won't provide the construction inspection, because you may remember, this project is intertwined with the Yorktown Parkway project that we have ongoing. We'll be using PEC for the inspection phase of the engineering, since they're already on the job for the Yorktown project. If you have any specific questions, I see Brian Lindaback's out there in the audience from MKEC. I'm sure you'd be happy to field those questions.
Anyone?
Was, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Was there, maybe I'm getting it mixed up with another item. Was this one, did it change from...
No, this is a new agreement that is part of the petitioned project for the Vista Ridge First Edition.
Okay. I must have gotten mixed up with something else, sorry.
In the past, there were some supplemental agreements with PEC for the additional work on the project that will be these improvements for the subdivision.
Are we going to essentially see agreements from MKEC for both of these projects, then? First and second?
Baughman is the engineer of record for the second phase.
Sorry for the free advertising.
And then I'll be portions of each of those phases, right? Each time?
Yes. We believe the Vista Ridge First Edition will be two phases, and we think the Vista Ridge Second will be three.
Okay.
Depending on the market, of course.
I'm going to be a little sarcastic. Brian, sorry.
Go ahead.
Brian, don't put a storage unit out there. That's it. Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Mayor? I'm, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead, brother.
I move to approve the agreement with MKEC Engineering Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, for engineering design and limited construction phase services for the public improvements related to Vista Ridge First Edition in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
Is that Paul?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
So I'm assuming you don't like storage units, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, before Brian sneaks out, I do want to give appreciation to MKEC. This was a unique situation. As you all know, typically, the developers engineer is retained for inspection services, and that literally means more dollars back to a firm that's already put work into a development. So we appreciate the cooperation and the community spirit of MKEC on this agreement.
Thank you.
And thank you for showing up, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. My favorite subject on here, KTA agreement, RE bridge project.
Mr. Mayor and council, the agreement before you tonight is with our partners at the Kansas Turnpike Authority. We've had many projects that we have shared with the Kansas Turnpike folks. They've been great partners. All of those previous projects, the city has been the leader in the partnership. In this particular case, KTA is on a little bit more of a compressed timeframe, so they took the lead. They have hired the engineer, they're working on right-of-way acquisitions. This agreement is just to establish that relationship between the city and the KTA. The proposal is a seventy-thirty split of costs. That split of costs was done by some math on the estimate of the cost to build the bridge over the Kansas Turnpike on Prairie Creek Road, with and without the ten-foot bike ped path that the city requests, and the math came out to be within tenths of a percent of seventy-thirty. We feel that's a fair arrangement, and we're always glad to work with the Kansas Turnpike Authority.
And didn't they, correct me if I'm wrong, but this governing body, at least Mike and Tim were on it, when we approved the deleting of the bridge on Main Street, so they expend more on this bridge, is that not correct?
Gosh, that's been some years ago that we had that agreement with the KTA, but yes, they, they did come to you all for your approval of their removal of a bridge on their system.
And in this project also, we're, this, I, Rick, I'm looking at Jenny and Les, but we're going to finish the road out all the way to Twenty-first and Thirteenth, right? There's not going to be any of that bumpy road, if you will, that's currently there, correct? Because wasn't there something about partnering also, maybe with, was it Butler County at the time or something, to finish it all the way to Twenty-first?
I hope at your next meeting to bring you an engineering agreement to get the engineering started on that connecting link over to Twenty-first Street to pave that street. We will be submitting that to WAMPO, to see if we can get some of the WAMPO federal funds to help us out on that. It is in WAMPO's plan, so it makes it eligible for those funds. It just hasn't been awarded funds yet.
And that, wasn't that in the two-year or less than...
It's, it's currently in the tip, which means it's eligible for funding now.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
So you have anything, I'm sorry, Tim. I have a question. Les, were you, I guess, when the KTA is designing the bridge, are we kind of flat, I mean, are we going to increase, you know, Prairie Creek, so we're not doing the speed bump, or?
Yes.
Will you have say in this, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. They're, they're flattening that vertical curve for sight distance.
Perfect.
It'll have proper lane widths with clearances and signage and all the things that the existing farm-to-market bridge doesn't.
Okay.
And for the public, for the public, the seventy is the KTA, thirty is Anover.
Correct.
Thank you.
So again, because of this, this governing body, you guys vote with, hopefully by the end of the year, or next year anyway, that you'll be able to get off theoretically at the turnpike, drive all the way to the heritage without getting on Anover Road. And so it's forward-thinking on your part that caused that to happen. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move that we approve the agreement with the KTA authority, or excuse me, Kansas Turnpike Authority for the Prairie Creek Road, Kansas Turnpike Bridge Project?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Just as a side note, I talked to Hope Community Church representative this past week, and they're building a sidewalk, a bona fide sidewalk, all the way around their property, and they're wanting to tie into the sidewalk that will be on the east side. So not only can they, but we can have a loop-de-loop. So it's, it'd be quite, quite an addition for no cost to the city, so, just a side note.
Is that, Mr. Mayor, is that sidewalk going to be on their property or in the right-of-way? Is that, Mr. Mayor, is that sidewalk gonna be on their property or in the right-of-way?
It's their property.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, they own everything up beside the children's home. And so the reason they asked, they wanted to check and make sure that we could... That it would be okay if they tied into that. So at the point we can, they might be done before we are. So we'll try our best to show them where they can stop. And so Les, I think, is gonna have a conversation with Mr. Ralston.
Mr. Mayor, I think, is me he talked to about that.
I'm sorry. I've talked so much, Rick, you know I can't remember nothing.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna talk to whoever you talked to, and I'm not sure. I need to get the name of that person.
Okay.
Because I think we're gonna talk about sewer at the same time.
Fella that you mentioned.
Yeah. Mr. Ralston?
Yeah. Sorry about that. He's still on there, and he's supposed to reach out to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see Daniel here, but is that something that we could add, possibly add to our trail system by connecting when they connect that sidewalk in?
Oh, so...
It may not be like... But it's... I know we can't put markers out on their property, but we can maybe still show it on the social media, you know, like AllTrails, you know? It's still a dotted line.
We can look into it. We have not added any... There's some HOA ones out there and such. We haven't added for some obvious reasons and such, but we can look into it, think about it. Haven't really thought about it, to be honest.
And maybe when we do things like that, those are maybe on our system that we have or will have. Those are a dotted line or a different hash line, and they say private or something. So that way, we're not really taking responsibility to of them, but that person's granted access.
We have similar things like that when it comes... There's a few private roads in our community that exist and are shown on some maps, but they're not city streets necessarily.
And we'll have ten feet all the way from Heritage Park essentially up to Twenty-first?
Yes.
Oh, well, it...
It's pretty cool.
With that next paving project that gets from the KTA Bridge to Twenty-first Street, that's the last link there of that ten-foot.
Now, if we could just get across to Fifty-four, to the south side of town.
Coming soon to Thaddeus near you.
Mangus Pedestrian Bridge.
Mike, I've only been working in that direction since nineteen ninety-six.
We hate going up to the Yorktown area and running across the street on our bicycle, don't we?
All right. Let's move on. I gotta get us out of here by eight-thirty, and I'm not gonna make it.
I know.
I'm already in trouble. Flock Contract Renewal, Tom is gonna talk to us about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. What we have before you today is we're seeking from approval from the government body to renew our contract with Flock. The original contract started in twenty-twenty-three. It was included in our budget. The next year, Flock raised the price on us by five thousand dollars to result in a thirty thousand dollar per year unit. You guys graciously approved that increase for us for twenty-twenty-five. However, Chief Buchanan was able to negotiate with Flock, and with this agreement extension would reduce our price this year back to twenty-five thousand dollars to include twenty-five thousand dollars next year, and then it would increase to thirty thousand dollars. This is a five-year agreement, which would run us out five years from today. I'm sorry, it's getting late. My math isn't working that great. But the total cost for this agreement would be a hundred and forty thousand dollars over the span of that five years. And the nice thing is they are just extending the original agreement. There's no new terms and conditions for us. They're extending the agreement that our council had previously approved. There were... The changes that were incorporated were with the original agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, I was... Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Yes, you mentioned that Chief Buchanan renegotiated that, and it's back to the original language.
That is correct.
That's fantastic. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the extended services agreement order from... With form with Flock Group, Inc., Atlanta, Georgia, in the not to exceed amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add on to what Councilmember O'Keehan said, but please send congratulations to Chief Buchanan. And I would just say that I think you guys serve as a good representation for all the city officials, that I feel like you guys treat the money as it's your own, and you handle it accordingly, and that really goes a long way, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. So we're locked into it. I mean, they can't raise it up again or anything until after this agreement, correct?
That is my understanding. Correct.
Five years.
Five years?
Yep.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Park naming policy, and Rick's gonna talk to us about this.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, as we went through some recent park naming, a couple, what, two or three in the last couple of years, we went a long time without doing any, and that's not unusual. You know, you don't actually build as many parks as we probably have in a city our size as we have recently, but we've added, what, three in the last few years? And it's come to our attention that the old resolution had some differences from what was actual and what was actually being done, and also it referred to a park planning committee, which we actually have a... The PrAB that was created after this resolution, the Park Rec and Advisory Board. So this policy is... This or this resolution is intending to clear all these things up and align it with what is actually going on and how it's actually being done, along with some of the guidance that has generally been established for naming as far as generally either historical or in geographical location references and such. I might stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That still gives the council the option to adjust names like we did recently. I know we took the opinion of a public board, but as long as the council has that option.
Correct. It would be... It would operate essentially the same way we just did it, where the Park and Rec Advisory Board would make a recommendation for the council's consideration, and the council always has the ability to amend, modify, or accept those recommendations.
I would just like to suggest that whenever those parks come up in the future, at least council gets to listen to it in a workshop.
So hindsight makes us all better. And actually, I was talking to Jolene Graham today that, you know, probably as we start down this process, what we should do is put this on the front, more front end of a park project. I tend to get hung up down on the details, and the name of a park is kind of at the back end of mind, so I will take full responsibility for these things always coming up at the end when we're trying to do a sign. And we go, oh. So, you know, it is our intent in the future as we start down the path of a design of a new park is to have the park naming be part of the front end of it. And also that way, the plans on the... The name on the plans aligns with the actual name of the park. There's a lot of reasons why we should do it that way. Full disclosure, it's my fault. We haven't done it that way. I'll take responsibility for that, but I endeavor to do better in the future.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution or appealing resolution number ten through twenty-two. Is it ten through twenty... Ten twenty-two. Number ten twenty-two regarding the naming of parks and approving an updated policy for naming city parks, thereby replacing city of Andover policy and guideline handbook, policy number three dash three.
Second. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do like, Rick, I mean, you know, we're taking out the previous policy, but I did like the encourage new housing developments to set aside a minimum of five acres for public parks. I mean, I like the fact that we're taking it out, so it gives them the freedom to do it, but maybe encouraging them to, you know, do something with that in the future. I know... I don't know if creativeness is using the land bank for the park, but maybe, I don't know, just being a good partner with it. I like parks. I like the outdoor greenscape, so...
I would say that our new park...
Park plan?
Plan...
Master plan?
Master plan. Thank you. I was drawing a blank there. Our Park Master Plan approaches this a little differently in where we locate parks and stuff. So it's not really where we're trying to get... And quite honestly, these used to be larger subdivisions that were putting in five acres, you know, and some scales gone down a little bit, and things have changed. So we will always look at where we can put new parks in and how we can try to acquire parkland and stuff, but that old kind of adage that all subdivisions were trying to put in five acres, little regional parks or subdivision parks, is not really the way the new Park Master Plan kind of guides us to that.
I just like thinking about it. I think Joel... And it slips in my mind who he's with Wygant or whatever, when they were doing the Penner property, talked about condensing down the unit, but then putting the parks, you know, in between the buildings. I really like that because I have seen some buildings come up previously that, you know, we've narrowed the plot line, the lot line, zero lot line or whatever, and then there's no room for any green space there. So, I don't know, just something to think about in the future. Not a requirement. We don't need to do anything extra, but maybe somehow encouraging it with grants or something. I don't know.
Anyone else? So we're ready to vote, right?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. I don't know if this is a copacetic to do, but if the governing body would let me, I'd like to do the member amendments before we go into executive session. We lose our whole audience that's on TV. Is that cool? Is there anything against it? All right. Homer, I apologize if I offended you, and I probably... I did. You're one of the hardest-working council members that I've ever had with me. So we're all family. This dispels the myth that we do unanimous on everything, and we don't... We just check the... We just check the box, and we go through the motions. And so I'm working on myself all the time and just did the... What's that called?
Emotional intelligence.
Emotional intelligence, which I have neither. But that was one of the things it said, that when I set my... When I set my mind on something, that I'm not easy to move off, but know that I am working on it. And I apologize to all of you because regardless of how I feel about the vote tonight, you all are very fiscal, responsible council members, and I appreciate what you do, and you do sacrifice a lot, man. And we get paid for three meetings or did, but, man, the effort everybody puts in is above and beyond. So I'll do better. All right? Anyone else?
I just, I guess, kind of piggyback on that and say that, you know, this... It's not easy in a lot of regard to try our best to represent the citizens of Andover, but I can tell you that in my short time on... In the council, with the council, that there's no doubt in my mind that every single individual up here absolutely does to the best of their ability try to represent the citizens. I've seen that time and time again. May not always look like that to everyone, but, you know, looks are deceiving, and there's a lot of information, you know, that is discussed and a lot that goes into the decisions we make. Not saying that we can't miss something. I'm sure we do many times. And I would just like to continue to advocate for any of those that are listening or that ever have concerns. The only way that we best represent the community is to hear from the community, and there are opportunities to do that through our Andover city page. But then also just speaking to us, again, I don't know a council member up here that isn't absolutely open to sitting down, taking a phone call, email with anybody from the community, and we want to hear what you have to say in that, you know, we are going to disagree, and that's part of what helps the system function the way that it was intended to function. And so I just appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve up here, and I really appreciate the city staff for everything that they continue to do to help us do the best that we can as we're up here.
Yep. I agree with you. There's... I mean, most people think that we go to three meetings, you know, a month, and there's some fun, you know, things we go to, and then there's some important things that sometimes you could fall asleep at. And, you know, talking about traffic for two hours. So I just say finance. I said traffic.
Finance, yeah.
But, you know, so there's things we go to that are super important that we get funding from, and we do take out a time of our work, you know, at, you know, two o'clock in the afternoon to go to a two-plus-hour meeting. So... And that's just one example. So... And this doesn't affect me since I'm a short timer now, and... But it's nice to be able to see that this is moving forward, and we're thinking forward. So that's what I like the most.
Anyone else?
I just want to kind of piggyback on what those guys said, and I think it's important that you all know that we're human. We're all gonna make mistakes. You've got seven...
Why'd you look at me?
I'm looking at Elvis. I'm looking in the mirror. I look in the mirror. We have seven very imperfect people sitting here, but we all try to give each other grace and try to remember, like Councilman Wimmer said, that, you know, we are forward-thinking, and we are wanting to do what is best for the citizens. And we try, and we hope we get it right, but you... I can assure you, it's like having six brothers up here, because everybody is working very hard for the common goal. So we just give each other... Continue to give each other grace and know we're all growing.
You know, thank you, thank you, Mayor, for your apology. It does go a long way to the rest of the governing body. Thanks for all the input tonight. I would have liked to have had the workshop ended, you know, a different way and maybe figure out a game plan, but...
We had cake. How much better?
We did have cake. But, you know, I... This is a learning lesson, and we can grow from it. So I just appreciate everyone up here and the time that I have been, you know, with the short timers. And technically, I could be a short timer, so I appreciate what we've done in the past. Rick's mentioned it, the master plan. Les, you know, when I was first appointed to the city council by former Mayor Ben Lawrence, you know, I asked Les, how do I get thirty years of knowledge? And he said, read the master plan. That guidance there, the payroll studies that we've done, it's all backed by that... The data, you know, that we do. And so I just really appreciate that and all the staff time that it takes to do that stuff, so.
Is it data or data?
It's short-circuited. It's data. Goonies.
Anyone else? I'll just say a couple of things. So I've been up here about a year and a half now. I knew this was gonna be a difficult conversation. It's something I've wrestled with for a while to try to come up with the right answer. Shortly after I got elected, this was... Happened a couple of times. Some people that I know live in Andover made the comment to me that the governing body just sits up there and does whatever the mayor tells them to do and tells them to feel. And each time, I had to tell them, when the mayor appointed me, he told me, I need you to sit up there and fight for what you believe is right. And that's always been my intent. This is one of the few times that we've disagreed, but what I appreciate is there's someone up here who's not gonna bend to what, in this case, the majority thinks. He's gonna stand for what he feels is best for the Andover citizens, and that's the type of people that we want up there.
And that's the type of people that we want up there. We don't want people to just kind of go with the flow or, you know, we want people to stay in their ground. And so that's something that I've appreciated from the mayor.
Thank you.
I want to apologize to everybody that I lost my decorum. I did raise my voice, so I do apologize for that. You know, we, we all have emotional, you know, we all get emotional. We all try and, you know, want to out, out yell each other some days, and I do apologize for that to everybody here. I don't really have anything else to say because I always go last. So I'll say the, say everything everybody else says. I will not be here for the next council meeting, but I want to wish everybody good luck at starting school here soon. Speaking of school, Rick, is Central going to be done by, Andover Central going to be?
Cone Fest 2025?
That is why you see a grand push on there because it is in there, is in the plans and specifications that they cannot work on Central or on 159. So if you've been up on 159, there's a push up there. They cannot work in front of the schools with this work. It has to be done when school's not in session. So they're going to push hard to get the patching in place, which I would remind everybody, since this year brought this up, this is the first part of a multi-layered project. This is not the end result, but it will be probably stay there like this until, after they get done with the patching, until the school season ends next year where we get in and then resurface the, the roadway.
So just for the public to listen to, they're going to do the two lanes right now because they're patching. They're tearing out the cracks and repatching. And then after they're done with that, it's going to go back to four lane? Okay.
Correct. It will be on a four lane, normal, normal operation during the school year. The contractor, if they do not get everything needed done in front of the schools, can elect work. You know, there's times for schools out of session for a couple of days and a weekend if they can get the plants open and get the work done and they can, they can elect to do it then too. But they're not, they're not to be working in front of the schools during the school sessions.
Perfect. So that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I, since this is the, the opening, I forget what we even call this session. Members, I do want to point out that we do have a concert this Thursday. Aaron Lewis is on Thursday, the 31st, and Chris Young is on August 2nd, this Saturday. And for once, we have a concert coming where it doesn't look like it's going to be 105 degrees. So get some tickets and come out.
All right. Do it again.
I just have one last thing. It has been hot and as always, I want to thank our street department and our police and fire for all that they do. These are not ideal conditions to be working outside in. And so thank you guys for all you do.
Hey, well, I guess typically I would ask the chiefs, but chiefs and captain, did we find any results on the blood? Drive?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
We did. I don't know if I'm authorized to.
Who was, who was fastest? Like.
Fastest?
Mine was like four minutes and 32 seconds.
It was definitely not me. Yeah. I was told my neighbor was way faster than me by my neighbor. So I'm not sure. But as far as the winner, I don't know. That's a, thank you very much for putting me on the spot. I don't know if I'm authorized to say.
But you know?
I do know. I will say that Red Cross came and picked up the trophy today to get the new name put on for this year.
Okay.
The new name?
Yes.
So more to come. They'll bring the trophy?
Yeah. What I would say, all joking aside, it was like 85 or 88 units of blood. It was amazing.
And last year was like 40 something, right?
Yeah, 40, 40-ish, yeah.
I think it's because Jody mentioned something up here and everyone saw it on the TV.
Yes. Well, thank you so much. I saw, I saw people from multiple communities supporting and tons at the fire department. I don't, I don't know if anybody went to the police department or not, but.
I did.
I actually gave at the police department. It was closer to my office.
And voted for fire.
We were busy from start to finish, so.
Yeah. It was, it was a great day. 80 some units of blood. We helped a lot of people.
Except for the fire truck parked right in front of the driveway, right?
Yes, right. Yeah. With signs, fire department that way.
And Chad, Chad, you have a gallon. So you're a little anemic for about four days. So, all right, all right. Thank y'all. Anyone else? Did you, did you have something? No. All right. Can I stack up to 14, please? And Homer?
I moved to recess in the executive session for consultation with the city attorney. For the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship per KSA 754319B2, the session is to include the governing body, city administrator, city attorney, assistant city administrator, nope, city attorney and the director of community development. The open meeting will resume at 8:51.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.